Good evening. I would like to call the regular board meeting on May 28, 2024. Next is our pledge. The public hereby advise of the audio and video recording of the meeting for purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are present with Mr. Mersky, who will be participating virtually. Next, we will have our guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Before we introduce the guests and scheduled speakers, there was an executive session of the board, met an executive session virtually on May 16, 2020, for the purpose of considering the potential purchase of real property and also for the purpose of consulting with the solicitor regarding information in connection with legal issues pertaining to the high school campus planning process. The board also met in virtual executive session on May 23, 2024, for the purpose of discussing a confidential special education student matter. Now, for guests and scheduled speakers this evening, we have the Methacton School District Retiree Recognition, Dr. Sugini.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Dr. Zerby, members of the Board of School Directors and members of the Methacton community. We are indeed fortunate in Methacton School District to have staff members who join our Methacton family and embark on lengthy careers of dedicated service to our students and service to the many facets of our organization that all work together to provide a superior education to the children of Methacton community. Each year in May, we come together to honor those members of the Methacton family who have retired from service during the past school year. Tonight, as we near the conclusion of the 2023-2024 school year and again come together in recognition of our retirees, we honor 15 retiring staff members who collectively represent a total of 361 years of exceptional service to the Methacton School District. We are grateful to them for all that they have done to make Methacton an exceptional place for our students to learn and grow, a place of warm welcome to parents, guardians, and members of the community that come together in our school buildings, and a second home to all of our staff members. On behalf of the entire Methacton community, I am honored to extend our gratitude and appreciation to all of our retirees and to wish them the very best of health and happiness in their well-deserved retirement. I will now read the names of our retirees and ask those in attendance this evening to come forward and be recognized by our applause. I ask that you hold your applause until I've read all names. They are in alphabetical order. Dr. Susan Angstad, Anthony Cardillo, Joni Cosgriff, Megan Fuga, Bertle Hogstrom, Paul LePree, Lori Markle, Anita Massey, Luann Milkie, Karen O'Neil, Sarah Reed, Sharon Saul, Michelle Vitelli, Elizabeth Yantash, and John Zidar. Congratulations to all of our retirees.
Next, I ask Ms. Kelly, our coordinator of communications, to come forward and to help us present the Spirit of Methacton Awards. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, it is my honor to introduce four outstanding individuals who embody the spirit of Methacton. These individuals represent facilities, Aramark for Student, and Central Office. The first is Ricardo Ricky Allez. Ricky has been a welcome addition to the Skyview Arcola Custodial Team. He is dependable, organized, and consistently goes above and beyond to accomplish all assignments and tasks. Ricky frequently volunteers to serve as head custodian at other schools to cover absences and is most recently volunteered to assist the grounds department during a staff member's extended absence. Ricky is a true team player and is always more than willing to lend a helping hand whenever needed. Thank you, Ricky. Our next awardee is Amanda Grove. Amanda came to Eagleville Elementary at the beginning of the school year, and she has been an incredible addition to the food services team. Amanda always goes above and beyond what is expected of her. She brings ideas to help make the breakfast line more efficient. She also brings creativity and excitement to the way foods, food items are presented. Students really enjoy the bento box idea that she came up with. Amanda is reliable and kind. She knows all the students by name, and she shares a smile with everyone every day. Thank you, Amanda. Our next awardee is Rebecca Murphy. Rebecca joined the Methacton family in April 2022 as the benefit specialist and jumped right in with an enthusiasm and kindness that is unmatched. She supports our staff in many ways, including answering questions, ensuring that they are covered under our plans, and managing the behemoth that is open enrollment. Rebecca has also been cross-trained in payroll and lets her creativity shine through the development of the business offices' two new newsletters, Benefits Buzz and The Foodies. Thank you, Rebecca. And our final awardee this evening is Christine Schaefer of First Student. Christine, better known to parents and students as Miss Chris, joined the First Student Team in August of 2022. Since coming onboard, her commitment to the children she drives daily truly stands out. As a school bus driver, her students' school day begin and end with her. Some of the wonderful things she does for her student riders include giving out prizes every Friday, decorating the bus for the holidays, and of course, ensuring every student is transported safely to and from school. Parents are equally impressed with her work ethic. In fact, First Student recently received an email from a parent of an elementary student praising Christine for going above and beyond what is expected from a bus driver. Christine is an asset to both First Student and the Methacton School District for the wonderful job she does every day. Thank you, Christine. That concludes.
Next on the agenda, we have the M-Awards. We are proud of the achievements of all of our students. This year, more than 150 members of the class of 2024 have earned M-Awards for academic excellence. These members of the class of 2024 will receive an M-Award in their graduation packet for achieving a 93% or greater grade point average for the 23-24 school year. Following graduation, these students will attend various higher education institutions such as the University of Pennsylvania, Virginia Tech, Michigan State, Penn State, Westchester, Drexel, and Temple, and many more, or plan to serve our country in the military. Congratulations to these M-Award recipients and to the entire class of 2024. Madam President, that ends our guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to reports. Our committee reports are attached. First this evening is Ms. Washington with district work on the DEI initiatives.
Thank you and good evening. So this past month, I have visited our four elementary schools to share on lessons of kindness, and this lesson actually is continuing with our Skyview students where we are talking on the same topic, but more specifically on inclusion and belonging with the same theme that we have differences and are also part of one Methacton community. Two weeks ago of the spring, social-emotional learning cohort ended their professional development, and this cohort ended with four sessions surrounded about building positive relationships with teachers and students. And we are also in the midst of ending the school year with celebrations and summer learning opportunities for our student leaders as well as our building liaisons. This week, a small group of students at the high school will be meeting to discuss the Summer Leadership Conference with a representative from Tom Stecker and Associates. And next month, for a Summer MIAC, the building liaisons will be meeting with me to discuss highlights from this school year and to begin planning for the next school year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Perdue on the IU.
Thank you very much. I don't have a lot for the MC IU, similar to Methacton. They also held their retirement celebration this month for all those that were retiring from the IU. One of the programs that I wanted to highlight was that the MC IU Office of Early Childhood Services provided an update to the board on the MC IU pre-K counts program. We currently have a program here in Methacton, and they just wanted to give an overview of the program itself and just talked about who's eligible for the program. For your, just for information, the MC IU program is available for children three, between the ages of three all up to the entry of kindergarten, and for families that live in our district. So we currently have a program here in Methacton. I also have flyers that I will give, and I know Arrowhead was brought up just because they are currently hosting the students there, and they gave a shout out to the facility for housing them and how important it is to have the students actually in the building that they will actually be progressing to kindergarten at. So I wanted to provide that update to the board, and I'll share this flyer with the administration and hopefully provide it also to any students in the district that are interested, or families that are interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Austin and Mr. Mersky on North Monco.
I was unable to attend the most recent meeting, so I don't know if Mr. Mersky has an update.
There is mainly just several approvals of the change of leadership within the North Monco, along with approval of, to move forward with looking at evaluating North Monco joining the North Penn School District and their onsite healthcare facility. I think those were the main things that we discussed.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to hear from our high school board representative now, Erica Sincere.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Erica, and I'll be trying to do both parts of the board meeting today. On May 16, the Boys Varsity Baseball Team won against Phoenixville, scoring 2-0 in the PAC Championships. They move on to the second round of districts playing for North Penn on Wednesday, May 22. The softball team played on May 20 in the first round of districts, but sadly lost to the Constegos. I hope I'm pronouncing that right, scoring 9-6. Our Boys and Girls Track and Field Qualifiers were Wesley Conover, Summer Malo, Kensley O'Donnell. Between May 17 and the 20, the Girls Track and Field finished third in districts and had the four athletes qualified to continue their season at the PIAA State Championship at Shippensburg University. Methacton seniors had their senior yearbook breakfast on May 22, where all seniors were able to have a nice breakfast meals with their peers, teachers, et cetera. The Senior Sunset will be held on June 7 from 7 to 9 p.m. May 3 was Film Fest, where all students were able to participate and see how films were produced, be with their friends, hang out, and et cetera. The Boys Baseball Game had lost 2-1 against North Penn on May 22 as well. The graduation parade for seniors will happen on June 10, right after rehearsal, where they will visit their former elementary school and possibly their middle school. On May 6, the AP tests were taken between the weeks of May 6 to 16. All senior students, starting from freshman year to et cetera, were able to participate in this and have their APs done. On May 2, the Unified Track Team had a home meet to recognize the seniors on the team. Freshman Marley Clean, who I'm pronouncing that right, broke the school record in the 1600, scoring 459.
All right, thank you very much. I do want to say I wish you the best of luck in your future. This is your last meeting, Ms. Perdue pointed that out, and I think it's pretty cool how we've seen you develop and grow to be the person you are today. It's pretty awesome, and I love seeing you at North Monco, you know, and seeing the craft that you love, and I do really wish you, on behalf of the board, all the luck in your next adventures. It has been a pleasure having you here. You're wonderful. And so with that, you may be excused so you can enjoy the rest of your evening if you'd like. I thought you'd like that. Congratulations. All right. All right. Next is Ms. Pergolini from the Foundation.
Good evening. As the school year winds down, we at the Methacton Education Foundation are looking ahead to upcoming events. The Methacton Alumni and Friends Social will take place on June 1 at the Eagleville Tap House patio. Everyone is welcome from 6 to 11. It is free, but you have to RSVP, so you can go to methactonalumni.org or check it out on social media, and it's alumni and friends, so everyone's welcome. Grad flowers, thanks to Penny's by Plaza. The Foundation is offering graduation flower pre-orders. You can order flowers for your grad students today, and a portion of the proceeds will go to the Methacton Education Foundation. In the fall, we are currently planning and finalizing the details for the Respect to School 5K, which will hopefully be in September, and also the Apex Award, so stay tuned, we should have those details soon. And lastly, we're thrilled to report that we were able to donate over $200,000 this year to the Methacton School District, directly impacting the education of our students. Some of the spring grants that were approved include Arcola Rocks, which is modern band instruments for Arcola students, new sonar smart xylophones for all the elementary schools, expanding accessibility to wheel-thrown ceramics at the high school, opening the door to orchestra, which includes funds to refurbish instruments for students in need, Big Blue Blocks at Arrowhead, and then we also help support the Teens National Trip for the Teens Group in the high school. So there's a whole bunch of other programs and projects, and we're thrilled about, and we'll have a full presentation soon, so you can see all the exciting things we're doing.
Thank you very much. I think we should do a round of applause for all the hard work the Foundation has done. My favorite is really the community getting involved with the dodgeball, all the way down to the big dinners of enjoying and seeing everybody as part of the community involved with the district, so thank you. I know it's a year-round effort, so. And next is Ms. Kelly regarding communications.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Lots of exciting school news and warrior pride this month. Some of the highlights include Skyview's band and orchestra students recently performed for the residents at Meadowwood Senior Living Community. Arrowhead Elementary School held a ribbon cutting to celebrate their new book vending machine, and the high school hosted its third annual MVP Pitch Day, where student entrepreneurs pitched a new product that they developed to a panel of judges. First place and a $200 award for each team member went to the student group who created Blender Puff, a dual-sided makeup applicator. Second place and a $75 award for each team member went to the student group who created the Goat Tote, a minimalist tote bag with organization and security features. These stories and others can be found on the district's website under Points of Pride. And then, as Ms. Sincere mentioned earlier, the Warriors baseball team won the PAC Championship, and additionally, Warriors baseball coach Dr. Paul Spiewak achieved his 300th win with the team. And we all are looking forward to graduation on June 11, and celebrating the class of 2024, graduation will take place in the Methacton High School Stadium at 4 p.m. Additional commencement details can be found on the high school website under Featured News and Announcements. And finally, the last day of school is on June 12. We hope our students, staff, and families have a safe and amazing summer, and we look forward to welcoming new and returning students at the end of August. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our superintendent report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, I just want to bring the attention of the board to the advisements as listed, and no further report from my office.
We will now move to public comment on board action items. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments.
All right, Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. One of the items on the agenda tonight is the approval of the '24-25 fiscal year budget. The board should table this matter, take additional time to review the budget, challenge what the administration has put together, and demand the administration revise it. The budget process at Methacton remains broken and ineffective, as I stated last week. Last week, I reviewed the multimillion-dollar budget surpluses over the past decade, and I see that continuing this year. In addition, the budget process does not comply with Board Policy 603 titled Budget Preparation, and I'll quote from that policy. "When presented for board review, the proposed budget shall contain estimated revenue and expenditures in each financial category for the previous fiscal year. That is missing from every budget presentation provided to the board." I quote again, "The amount should also contain amount of surplus deficit anticipated at the end of the current fiscal year. I asked that question, nobody responded, as it has not been presented to the board." Additional changes can easily be made to this budget to reduce the 4.75% tax increase. Two areas that are be simple to adjust are budgeting additional interest income. Projected interest income this year is 2.4 million. 600,000 favorable to budget, this year's budget. The current next year's budget includes 1.9 million, so you're anticipating a half-million-dollar decrease at least. Needs to be changed. Last week, Mr. Bricker and Mr. Warner attempted to explain how interest income was budgeted. It's clearly ineffective if you're going to be 600,000 ahead of budget. Mr. Bricker stated that budgeted interest income increased over this year's budget, a meaningless comparison. The budget includes 1.625 million transferred to the Capital Reserve. The budget already includes $10 million of borrowing for capital projects, and the district occurs as a $16 million Capital Reserve. I asked how the 1.6 was determined. Dr. Zerby stated that we have the master plan, which only defines spending. That answer is only half-baked. Why is it 1.6 million? Why isn't it 2 million? Why isn't it 500,000? Why isn't it 0? Is it a gut feel that that's the right number? You need to take a look at this number. Reducing it would significantly reduce the tax increase. Table the budget, take another month, do what you're supposed to do, carry out your fiduciary responsibility, and review the budget and protect taxpayers. Regarding the Arrowhead Ballers, make sure I understand the chain of events. KCBA recommended installing Ballers at a cost of 77,000. The administration endorsed this. The board approved this. The next day, the administration had to change of heart. We're going to spend 77,000 after hearing public comment. Now and tonight's agenda is approval of Ballers at Arrowhead for 14,000, 80% less than what you approved and what the administrative recommendation recommended. Not doing a real good job protecting our money. Thank you.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. There's something wrong with the presentation made by Mr. Bricker a week ago. And to me, it greatly bothers me that something is wrong. Slide 20 had a pie chart showing debt service at nine and a half percent. That's 13 million. Slide 23 had interest of 3.3 million, principal of 7.2 million, for 10.5 million. Slide 24 showed interest of 4.2 million and principal payment of 8.8 million totaling 13 million. So somewhere, there's a missing 2.2 million. There's no mention of a thing called inter-fund transfer in the slides. The, I saw the most recent issue of PDE's 2028 document on pages 16 and 17. It shows 1.6 million of inter-fund transfer. So to me, it's clear that there was a cover-up of the inter-fund transfer on the slide presentation by Mr. Bricker a week ago. If that were eliminated, it could cut our taxes by 2% and make the books look correct. I urge you to investigate this before you take a vote. If that involves a tabling, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim Malik Warsester. I also ask you, tax and spenders, to table the budget. Agenda item 9J. The Care Board ran on taxes. You guys attacked prior Republican boards. You guys, in your own literature, to, to the public, talk about Republican-led school board raised taxes 33 times in 34 years. You guys have them beat. You've raised them every year you've been sitting up front. How could you possibly, you know, criticize them? And your answer to crushing inflation, gas prices, mortgage rates, and food prices through the roof is more pain. A 4.7% tax increase, the highest in recent memory, and you haven't justified it to the taxpayers. I didn't hear anybody from the board go, hey, Mr. Bricker, or Mr. Bricker, Mr. Winters, work on getting that down. Not one thing, not even in finance. Where's the effort? Where is it? You're the president. What about it? Hey, guys, this is too high. You're coming up for reelection. So, you know, that may be good for us. Mr. Bricker gave his presentation last week about how we're supposed to be really happy we're under the index. The index is the maximum number. You're under the maximum number, but as Mr. Earnshaw said, you've got multimillion-dollar surpluses for as far back as you can see, which means we're overtaxed. So that graph meant nothing if we're getting overtaxed, which we are. And we're getting overtaxed again this year. He also presented a comparison to other districts, but didn't say, hey, what about Upper Marion with the King of Prussia Mall? We are almost total local share. How about an analysis of all these other people that have tax ratables and commercial businesses? The budgeted number for the Capital Reserve, where is it? I go to the budget, I pull up the page that has Capital Reserve, and one of it's blank. It's blank, says Capital Reserve estimate, projection, nothing. Why is that? But the inter-fund transfer page, there's 1.6 million. Can anybody explain that? Can anybody? Dave, where's your presentation on why you have to fund 1.6 million to the Capital Reserve? Where is it? I mean, you're big on presentations. Where's that presentation to justify that number? There's absolutely no reason why you cannot fund the Capital Reserve. And as people have said, we're down under 3% maybe. But you guys don't go ahead and pass it. You don't care. You know, think about senior citizens, think about taxpayers. Jen, like I said, you're up for reelection.
Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no other comments, we will now move to board meeting minutes. May have a motion to approve the April 16th work session and April 24th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes as attached. Ms. Austin, can I have a second? Ms. Shonda? Right. I have to do a roll call, so I'm just going to say the, the names, and then if you could just say yes or no. Ms. Cancro? Yes. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Shonda?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries nine to zero. We'll now move on to fiscal items. Next on the agenda, Mr. Bricker.
Thank you, Madam President. This month, for your approval, are 10 items under fiscal with one change to number 9D3, which was removed from the agenda from last week.
Thank you. Would anyone like to take these separately? All right. Seeing none, may have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented. Mr. Winters, do I have a second? Ms. Graff? All right, any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Austin.
I just wanted to be reminded of what are, what the special ed exception was that we could have taken this year. Do you have that number?
That would have taken us up to 6.78, I do believe.
6.78 is what the maximum is that we could have.
If we took the exception, that would have been the maximum.
If we would have taken the exception because of our recent, our extraordinary special ed costs.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Winters?
Just a couple of comments. I don't support tabling the budget. From a forecast perspective, that we have discussed this for, for several years, and I do agree that having a, a meaningful forecast that has an exact aspect, but more or less, that is what the doctor, yeah, Dr. Bricker, Mr. Bricker is going through with the review of the, we start with the budget and seeing where that's kind of projected to finish with the changes in the budget. So there's an aspect of looking at current data related to everything related to the budget. So we're looking at the charter schools, we're looking at the changes in legal expenses, we're looking at the substitute rates, the amount of substitutes we expect to use next year, all those types of things, the big drivers related to the budget, and already contractual commitments, which I discussed last week, that I stand behind. Additionally, from an interest assumption, Mr. Bricker, can you talk about how, again, how we go through the process of identifying the interest expense or interest, I'm sorry, interest income that we project, and why we project it to be less next year than this year despite being a missed? Because I do believe we have to make assumptions related to the interest rate and what those assumptions were last year and what actually materialized.
Sure, we project out where we anticipate the balances to be throughout the fiscal year. We then apply interest rates associated with those, as we go throughout the year, which then creates the interest income. There's ins and outs that come with that. The rates that we used last year's budget was projections based from PFM and information that we could find from the Fed regarding where interest rates were anticipated to be this year.
Thank you. Dr. Zerby, when it comes to the, the Capital Reserve and the requirements that we see ourselves in the next 10 years, conservatively, what is the low end of that number? Approximately?
In, in terms of our annual spend that we anticipate?
Yeah, when we evaluated our facilities recently, we identified what the requirements were for Warsester, for Arrowhead, hopefully not much, et cetera, and for the high school. I believe that number is well over $100 million, is that correct? Independent of what we did.
Some is well over a million dollars, but the Capital Projects Fund is designed to really take care of those projects that are probably less than $2 million on an annual basis. Whereas projects that are over that, like, for example, you know, the renovation of the high school, you know, would be something where we'd have to borrow. But in, in all fairness, you know, the, the idea here is that as we start spending from the Capital Projects account, you know, there's a, there's not a finite, you know, amount of money there. So we, we need to find a way to make sure that not only are we taking care of the projects that are slated to be addressed through that, that fund, but also being able to replenish it for the, the, the second five years and, and 15 years down the road. So it's, it's a process.
Also, Mr. Bricker, can you explain what goes in that row related to debt service and transfers? And what might be the discrepancy that is being discussed?
So without knowing exactly where the discrepancy is on the pages, the debt service transfer includes the interest on leases, the interest on bonds, the principal on leases, the principal on bonds. It also includes transfers, it also includes fees that are paid. So like, if we pay a fee to enter a tournament, those fees, based on the account codes that are set up by PDE.
So those transfers would be to other funds, like the Capital Reserve Fund?
Capital Project Fund, Food Service Fund. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote. Ms. Cancro? Yes. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Shonda?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the personnel items by Dr. Sorjini.
Good evening again, and thank you, Madam President. The personnel items for the month of May include those presented last week at the work session, as well as the following additions. To resignations professional Tatiana Machado, math instructor at Arcola, we thank Tatiana for her service to Mathacton and we wish her well. And Luann Milkie, elementary instructor at Skyview, resignation for retirement. We extend our gratitude to Luann for her 35 years of dedicated service to the students of Mathacton, and we wish her the very best in her retirement. There is one employment professional addition, Jessica Bruce, for the position of staff nurse. She's been with us in the district for several years through one of our third-party providers, and we're excited to welcome her officially into, into the Mathacton family. One employment classified, Carly Post, to the position of secretary to the assistant principals at the high school. Carly has also been with the district for several years in a substitute capacity, and we're excited to welcome her officially to the Mathacton family. There are two changes of status classified, Adriana Rundle, from paraprofessional to at Arrowhead to marketing and digital media specialist at Farina, and Andrea Tosso, from paraprofessional to at Skyview to communication assistant at Farina. We thank Adriana and Andrea for taking on these new positions. And finally, additional supplemental contracts for scheduling assistance, planning assistance, and summer registration assistance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone want to take these separately? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented. All right. Ms. Graff, can I have a second? Ms. Cleary? All right. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All right, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Cancro? Yes. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Shonda?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is curriculum and programs. Dr. Regina.
Thank you, Madam President. With the items on the curriculum part of the agenda, there are no additions or revisions from last week's presentations. Thank you.
Great. Okay. May have a motion to approve all curriculum items as presented. Mr. Winters, may I have a second? Ms. Austin? All right, any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we will move to roll call vote. Ms. Cancro? Yes. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Shonda?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. Next on the agenda is policy. Dr. Regina.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, no changes to the revision, although I think a personal note is we, for second read, we have 006.2, which is the electronic meeting during this agenda, which is what we're going through now in a roll call vote. You'll be able to voice vote after the passing of that second read. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. May have a motion to approve all policies for second read as presented. Ms. Cleary, may I have a second? Ms. Graff? Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none? All right, we will do a roll call. Ms. Cancro? Yes. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Shonda?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries nine to zero. Next on the agenda items under other, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, you have listed items under transportation. You also have items under benefit and compensation plan, as well as school safety, a school board treasurer, treasurer. And one item that we need to get volunteers for is item 13E, which is the, up to three delegates for the assembly appointments. And then the last item that's, that's different from last week is the agreement listed under 13H, and it reads as follow. "Approve the settlement agreement and release for student 320023 with special language of other terms of settlement agreement drafted by the district solicitor."
Thank you. Can we move to the 13E for volunteers for approval for the 2024 PSBA delegate assembly appointment? I see Ms. Cleary? Ms. Perdue? Ms. Graff? Okay, we will list those, any other volunteers, I apologize. All right. With that, can we please modify the 13E listing with Ms. Perdue, Ms. Cleary, and Ms. Graff? All right. All right. We will now take a motion to approve all items listed under other as presented. Ms. Austin? May I have a second? Ms. Shonda? Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, I will do a roll call. Ms. Cancro? Yes. Ms. Austin?
Yes, but we don't need to do a roll call.
Oh, I don't, oh my gosh, I apologize. All right.
But, but yes.
All right, I'm going to run through the roll calls to finish as this. Ms. Shonda?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Mersky?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Winters?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you for your patience on that. I appreciate the policy change. Next are dates for board members' calendars. Board member dates are listed on the agenda and also on the Mathacton website. Also to note is that the committee meetings in June have been canceled. So we will now move to new and old business and new business. Do we have any old or new business? Yes, Ms. Shonda?
I just have some feedback for Ms. Washington. A friend of mine told me that her daughter came home from Woodland and drew a picture of her and her friend and wrote, "We're different, but we love each other." And she very proudly taped that to her bedroom door. And she very proudly taped that to her bedroom door. So you're... whatever you're doing is getting through to the kids, so thank you.
That's great feedback. Any other comments on new or old business? All right, great. Seeing none. The courtesy of the floor is next. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the Board. The Board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments.
Jim Malik-Worcester, so now I hear an executive session, you're going to buy land. You want to build new high schools, now you want to buy land. We're going to use the Capital Reserve for that, Dave? How you going to... you know? It's like, oh, let's just spend it. Oh, 4.7%. That's where you're going to get it. At the last meeting, I asked whether or not the videos of board meetings are being edited. Dr. Zerbi said that it is clear in policy that the video of board meetings does not get edited. I present this for your consideration. You held a board meeting on February 20th, 2024. At that meeting, we were presented with the infamous heat map. Mr. Mersky, to his credit, asked the Duhui rep what metrics were used to determine a color or is it just a gut feel estimate? In his response, Mr. Bryce, I think that's his name, confirmed gut feel was a factor. In your rebuttal, Dave, you responded that the clear answer on the floor was that it was based on his experience. So I reviewed the district's video, and there was no reference by Mr. Mersky nor Mr. Bryce to gut feel. And I was sure I heard it. I was positive I heard it. So I went to my video, which I took myself, and basically, it was there in my video. Gut feel. Mr. Mersky said it. So did Mr. Bryce. It appears that 10 seconds of the district's video is missing, beginning at roughly 1:41:13, which contains the gut feel comments. And upon further inspection, there appears to be a noticeable difference in the audio and video at that point as well. So I ask you, board members, to go look at the video, and you explain to me where 10 seconds of the video went. That's what I want to hear, Dave. You can explain that to me. You were so indignant at the last meeting. Okay? I'd like to hear from you where it went. Ms. Shonda, go look up what the ranking of Woodland is and how DEI is impacting Woodland. Ms. Drummond, good luck with your raising our taxes for special ed exemption, because what's going to happen is you're going to get audited just like all those other school districts who did the same thing. I would go look up that article. Mr. Winters, think it's time for a new chair of finance. Your answers were like condescending. I mean, the $1.6 million? You know, what... Do you buy your car cash? Do you pay cash for your house? Do you double pay your mortgage? I mean, if you don't get that, we have a problem.
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Couple of follow-up comments on the budget, although I know it's a moot point at this point. The policy 603 clearly states, and I'll quote again since some people didn't seem to hear me the first time. When presented for board review, the proposed budget shall contain, one, estimated revenue and expenditures in each financial category for the previous fiscal year. Skipping to three, amount of surplus/deficit anticipated at the end of the current fiscal year. Mr. Bricker, taking a look at a few numbers, does not satisfy that requirement. When presented to the Board, we should have seen, as a member of the public, the anticipated surplus likely for this fiscal year. It was nowhere to be found. Noncompliance, number one. Noncompliance, number two. Nowhere was it presented estimated revenue and expenditures in each financial category for the previous fiscal year. It wasn't there. Your answer is nonsensical. Liz? So if you want to raise taxes to 6.78%, you're trying to say we could have gone to 6.8, we only did 4.75. But you were... to get to use that exception, you got to go to the MAX Act 1, in case you didn't know that. And two, why didn't you go to 6.78? You have all these capital requirements. Why not go to the MAX Act 1, take the exceptions, and put like $4 million in the Capital Reserve? According to Dr. Zerbi, you'd still be short. Why didn't you do that? Again, there's no reason why it came up 1.6. It's probably a gut feel. Interest income. If you think the budget process is accurate when year-to-date, you're a half a million ahead of... half a million or 30% ahead of budget? I'm not sure where your finance background is, Paul, but that doesn't fly. If you're that far off, you got to change the process. You're not doing it. I'll reiterate the change of need in a finance committee. It's just not happening. So as a member of the public, we count on the Board to really hold up your fiduciary duty, challenge the budget, challenge what the administration puts forth, whether it's a budget, whether it's Ballers at an elementary school or anything. You're seeing all the details, we're not. We've got three minutes at a work session, six minutes at a board meeting, a regular meeting, to comment. We're not seeing all the details. We're relying on you to be our fiduciary representatives. And the way this budget process went is not upholding that standard. It's very disappointing. Maybe it's because there's only three of us here commenting on the budget. I don't know why, but you're representing however many of the taxpayers there are in a district, and you're supposed to be looking out for us as taxpayers, being good stewards of the money. The overall budget's going up 7%. It's sad.
Thank you very much.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Looking at this budget, the criticism of it by three members of the public, and your silence, with the exception of some weak comments, one of them that it could have been a higher budget. It just stresses my understanding of the word oversight. That's the function of a school board in Pennsylvania, oversight. And I think it's a fair comment to say that with a month available for further consideration of the budget, you have totally ignored the public's request that you table it for further study. It's just incomprehensible that you, school directors, who presumably own property that is taxed here, don't consider the other 30,000 or so people in this district, some of which are struggling, and all of them expect responsibility of their public servants. I'm very disappointed in you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that would like to respond or comment? Seeing none? May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Ms. Alston, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Thank you, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.